Meeting of the Gargersville Stormwater Utility Board to order. Please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call from my right.
John Bear.
Kent Gross. Minutes of the previous meeting. Let's see, John, you were not here for the last meeting. Michael was. Michael's gone. He's not here. So can we approve these minutes there? Do we have to table them till the next meeting?
Either way, you can't approve them. All it is is an agreement that that's an accurate representation of the meeting, you know, necessarily. If John, I think John has to review the last meeting, be able to vote on it.
To vote on it there? So.
So would you make a motion?
We'll just table it. We'll just table it till the next meeting. Alrighty, first item of old business.
Alright, so this is plat four oh one dash twenty twenty-two, the Hickory Trace subdivision. A preliminary drainage review of a thirty-six lot subdivision located on Morgantown Road, approximately a half mile north of Whiteland Road. This was at the April meeting. It was continued as there were some revisions that needed to happen. This has been back through TAC, commented on and reviewed by Wesler. At this point, staff would recommend approval of the preliminary drainage approval. We do have Donna here with North Point. I'm sure she could talk about the project.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Donna Smithers with North Point Engineering. And we're representing Greg Allen's group for Hickory Trace subdivision. It's a thirty-six lot subdivision containing roughly thirty-nine acres. If you look at page three, I just have an aerial just so you can see the location of the site. Majority of it is a cultivated field with the southern portion is a wooded area on site. And what we are doing, and if you look at the very last page, just to show you, we have our proposed subdivision. What this exhibit shows you is we have two ponds on site, one out by Morgantown Road and the other on the southwest corner of the project. And it just shows our drainage areas to these ponds. The pond at, along Morgantown connects to the pond at the southwest and then it outlets into a swell or a low area at the southwest corner of the site. And as Joe said, we've been through our review, addressed all comments, and everything's in order. We're actually in the process right now of the final construction plans and final drainage and everything right now to get those filed. But we meet the ordinance and we don't have any waivers or anything such that we're asking for. So I guess I can address any questions that you might have.
Looks like Wesler did a review for the town and everything was good there? Any questions?
So when it first went through tech review, what was the holdup? Again, Joe?
There was a subdivision control ordinance requirement for a stub street to the west.
Yes.
Wasn't incorporated initially and that's been incorporated now.
Okay, it just doesn't show it in here then on this drawing?
That is from the, I have another map I can show you. Overall design right now, but this is the street we stubbed.
Okay.
So, you know, the developer was not sure he wanted to do that. He knew he had to do it. So we were held until he made that decision. So that was the reason for our continuance.
Okay.
You see all the blues, all of our storms that were proposed and our sanitary and our two ponds.
Alrighty. Yep. Thank you for that.
So we're looking for approval of the drainage design for this or preliminary drainage?
So that's going to drain off to the west?
Southwest.
Southwest corner right there?
That's the lowest area on the site. There's a swell, that ditch that crosses the southwest corner of the property.
Kind of looks like everything naturally drains that direction anyway.
A portion of it does. That's why the need for the pond out by Morgantown, because it has a couple of different watersheds on the site, as you can see from that existing watershed map. So with the new proposed grading and such, we're draining a portion of it again to that detention area along Morgantown and then it connects and flows southwest to the other pond.
Unless you have any more questions, I can make a motion.
Nope, go ahead. I'm good.
I move to approve the preliminary drainage design for plat zero 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 four zero one dash twenty twenty-two for the Hickory Trace subdivision.
Alright, well, second that. So I got a motion and a second to approve plat zero 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 four zero one dash twenty twenty-two for the Hickory Trace subdivision. Any further discussion?
Don't think so.
Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question about, I'm public, public talk. Is there going to be a time where the public can input some, I know I've been working with these guys, but is there a point in time where we can discuss some of these things with you guys or?
Is it water related?
It is water. This is water related, yeah, for this particular one.
So I don't have an issue with that there. Is it something short and brief there? You just want to talk about it quick?
The first one is because of.
Yeah, I tell you what, step up here, well, just state your name there and your address there and we'll.
I am John Ogborne. I am at forty eighty-two South Morgantown Road. I'm the property to the north of this subdivision. My background is engineering, so I, you know, you have to bear with me. But the, I have a subdivision out in Hendricks County, so I have a little bit of experience in this stuff, slightly. So, so the water flow going to the southwest, I know you said that that was naturally how it goes. But when you typically, when you do a subdivision, you're changing ag to a residential type of thing. It's not the same kind. There's more water. It's different kinds of water. It's, you know, that sort of thing. So there's usually different stipulations on it. So I am concerned that, and I'm just bringing this up now so that we can, somebody can look at it, okay? That that water flow going that way ends up, it ends up across a couple of fields that people may not like that. And then it ends up in a pond and then it goes over to Persimmon Woods and down another area. So that's just something to look at as we're going through this. And then, you know, just going through all of the fundamentals of this, I don't want a lot of water coming. I have a lot of water already coming across my ground from the natural way it is. And when you start to put houses in concrete in here, the coefficient of runoff becomes instead of, instead of absorbing into the soil, from twenty-five, you know, seventy-five percent going into the soil, it goes to zero percent going into the soil. So that can increase it. That could, I calculated out a million gallons, so, of during a big, kind of big rain. So that is a lot of water. And so I don't want it flooding my whole area. So, yeah, so that's my concerns right now as we start to walk through this, that those get addressed and that all the elevations and the pipe flows and all the things that we're saying all make sense and that it can actually be done. And like I said, I'm an engineer. I've done big, big projects. And if you don't get it done to begin with, it costs millions of dollars. Tax payers will end up millions of dollars. So, and we can't, Gargersville can't afford that. So, yeah, so, so that's my input. Thank you.
Alright, no, no, thank you. I mean, you're always welcome to review the drainage surveys and stuff there, so, I mean, that's.
I'll get it on my distribution list as soon as we get new filings or construction.
Yeah.
Forward, forward, until we have some information.
My intent isn't to stop, you know, isn't to delay progress. My intent is to make it so that it happens.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I agree with that. And like I said, these developments are supposed to capture and hold water on their sites, alright? So they're not allowed to shut it off to somebody else there. You know what I'm saying? So. Yep.
And we do, you know, as we mentioned, go through our diligence and have our engineering firms review these to make sure that they're in compliance with the ordinances and.
Yep. Oh, yeah, yeah. But no, no, thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, anything else for old business?
Nothing else for old business.
Alright, moving on to new business.
New business is encroachment request, ENC thirty-five oh six dash twenty twenty-three at eighty-two North Sedona Drive. This is lot twenty in Highland Knoll, section two. It's right at the very north end, kind of where North Sedona Drive dead ends into the field. They're asking to put a fence over the northern drainage and utility easement. There's no infrastructure in that easement. However, there is a pretty substantial ditch in that twenty-five foot. You can kind of see on page, page with our plot plan they've drawn out.
This one here?
Yeah. They're proposing to kind of bridge that swell with the fence, which would leave that open to flow. Staff doesn't necessarily have an issue with it, but with the significance of that easement and the swell there, we didn't feel we're comfortable just administratively okaying that.
Which side is the, where's the significant swell?
And it's, it's not, you know, feet deep. What's that? Bad eyes. No, it is feet deep. So, cornhouse fifty-seven, Knoll soil thirty-five.
It's about two foot.
So they're just planning on their fence spanning that?
That's what they're proposing, yeah. They're kind of showing what the proposal is.
They've got a big gate though that looks like it's going where basically the swell line is.
Yeah, exactly. That's what they're showing.
I mean, we, when we make these approvals, it's with the condition that if there's work that needs to be done.
When I bring them here, I always make them do a recorded encroachment agreement.
Yes.
Yeah.
That goes with the title.
Yep.
So I was going to ask you, there's no, there's no utilities in that easement there?
Yeah, nothing in that one, it's just a.
No, just a big utility, a pretty drainage easement basically. Because they have to get that water through to get your side grades enough to cover your wide.
Yeah. Well, they're enclosing the easement behind the fence.
Partially.
Yeah, they're spanning across the top of the easement.
And our recorded, I don't think I put a copy of the draft one in this one. I did. We cross-reference, we cross-reference the deed, the number. So the encroachment agreement would turn up on a title search? That kind of ensures future owners are at least somewhat aware of.
I know, I see. These always bother me there. It's not the person that does it there. It's the second or third person down the road that comes in and we have to go back in and do something. And then I go, uh, what? That's the one that always bothers me.
Remember that?
But legally, it has to be disclosed, right?
Yeah, because we record it, we cross-reference the number for the plat and the first recorded deed on the lot, so. Any kind of title search should turn that up and it should be disclosed.
Is that pretty much on the high end of the drainage area, too, Joe?
Yeah.
So it's really not much drainage going into that. The ditch is more for just collection purposes than water.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's, that is the high point of the whole subdivision up there, so.
I mean, to be honest, I feel like it's more at their risk than it is ours if they have an encroachment agreement, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think their big risk there is just going to be collecting chaff off that field.
Right.
Alrighty, you good with it?
I'm good.
Yeah, as long as we got that encroachment agreement there, we're fine.
I move to approve, I guess, the encroachment number, ENC dash zero zero three five zero six dash twenty twenty-three. The request is presented.
Alright, well, second that. So I've got a motion and a second there to approve encroachment, ENC dash zero zero three five zero six dash twenty twenty-three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Alrighty, anything else for new business?
It's all for new business.
It's all for new business. Moving on, discussion items.
Not a whole lot for the project funding update. We've been working with Adam Stone, Stone Municipal. Right now, with the West Street project fully funded by Stormwater, we're at about a half million dollar gap from what Stormwater has available and what that's going to require. So we're working through with Town Council on Dan and the engineers to figure out where that comes from. Because obviously it's not, it come from this board. With the projects we have on the books already.
Correct.
The pipe culvert replacement at three hundred north, Roy got us through IDAM approval.
Well, good for you, alright.
Working on core approvals.
Core approval, yes.
We're, we're ready to order the pipe. It's a hundred and three inch by seventy-one inch, aluminumized.
Aluminumized, it's just five hundred, six hundred dollars more for the aluminumized pipe versus the standard galvanized. So it's certainly worth the money for.
Oh, yeah.
Extra twenty-five to, you know, potentially fifty years, potentially top of the fifty-year baseline. So that's, it's, you know, recommended for that, for sure.
And we're, when that approval's ready, we're going to get that from contact at eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents. I think when we first brought this, we approved up to, I think it was sixty thousand for that pipe, which this is significantly lower.
But we will have additional.
We'll have some additional. The county highway is going to perform the work and then invoice the town for materials beyond base materials, so.
Concrete.
Concrete, rebar, that type of stuff. So we'll have one, this invoice, when this comes in, then we'll have one additional invoice from the county, once that's complete. It should still come in significantly under the sixty thousand dollars we estimated.
Sounds good.
That work scheduled for first July?
Luke told me he had it scheduled for probably late July.
Late July, so.
That's assuming approvals for the, with the Army Corps.
Well, that's the kind of the question I want to try to get to, that some of the back and forth correspondence, yet I have not been able to ask that question, if it's safe to do it prior to full approval or whatever. So we would like to get or just as soon as possible, ask that question, if it's safe to do it prior to full approval or whatever. So we would like to get or just as soon as possible, but not with any risk.
Right.
So, but she has indicated that she has four reviews ahead of us that were in the queue, that she's been actually working us in kind of in the first place. So I'm hopeful that we'll see some positive movement. But it has been a little bit of a struggle with the, just correspondence wise, so.
How long do they have to review that? Thirty days?
Technically, I found out that they have sixty days. And it's a little bit, on the forms that are submitted, they're IDAM forms, and IDAM says after thirty days, you have automatic approval. Well, that's from IDAM, not the Corps.
Yeah.
So that was kind of disconnect a little bit.
Oh, yeah, we don't anticipate any.
But.
Real issues.
We're seeing, you know, I'm having to answer some questions or asking some specifics about impacts and things like that. But hopefully, trying to get really answers with it.
The three masted, the three masted schooners won't be able to go through anymore, but.
Yeah.
The RGP process is, you know, it's supposed to be, it's not the full-blown, you know, individual permit and cover these under, but generally it's the guise of the, you know, there's already a mechanism in place and there's already these, this long list of things that you have to comply with between IDAM or as long as you're in compliance, you know. And so theoretically, the review is a lot less intensive. But in this case, it's been, so communication is not always immediate. And maybe we're just too used to that, but it is federal government. I understand.
So what was the lead time on our pipe there?
I haven't got that information yet.
Okay.
I've still had communication with contact to get that.
Okay.
We're working through it. I don't, I don't see any. I'm confident in Roy's design.
Well, we'll also have, it looks like our actual paving schedule. I don't know if Brian had mentioned that or Dan did, but they've, per the schedule we just got this past week, they've actually pushed their starting out.
Okay.
I mean, we didn't ask them to do that, but so it's, I think that there's versatility there to still make.
Okay.
So, just trying not to become a nuisance to the Corps and all come off.
Yes.
I, you know, try to be insistent, I guess you might say.
Squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
We've seen, I mean, not on our side, we've seen pretty decent lead times for custom. You know, like with your more standard pipe sizing, it's not as bad. But with more, with something that's custom, it's been a little bit longer.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I've already put it in the inquiry and we're getting the process rolling.
Okay.
Waiting on this final.
Roy, when did you submit that for the review?
We sent it certified on the twenty-fifth of April.
So they've had it already over thirty days?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's nuances with that, you know, not did at all.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they're trying not to get a push to that sixty day. She's, she's already working with us to, you know, move it forward, even though she's, you know. So I'm trying to, you know, balance that to say, hopefully we'll get it less than sixty days.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Have it favorable.
Any large issues?
It's all in our, it's all in our ballpark right now. The county's ready to come in, help us get the work done, probably it's late July.
Okay.
It's just we got to get the pipe.
Yeah, we just got to be ready. We will be.
Sounds good. Alrighty, good old three-notch village.
Three-notch village. Kind of in wrapping up the grant application at this point, due to the end of the month. We do have that easement issue still outstanding. I've knocked on doors over there with just no luck. Nobody's answering the door for me. Maybe it's scary. I don't know. I haven't been able to get anybody home or anybody to answer the door. Mike is going to go ahead and send those certified to hopefully get the signatures on them.
Okay.
And get those, get that process rolling.
You just need to show up to the door holding an empty pizza box is all you need.
Maybe that's it. Maybe you need to bring a peace offering.
Just, just bring, just no empty pizza box, man.
Stormwater Board authorized me to bring them some crumble cookies?
Yes.
That crumble cookies will get answered already, I think.
There you go.
So that's, that's where we're at on that. A whole public hearing, second public hearing on the thirteenth at Town Council.
Okay.
There'll also be a resolution for the Town Council to pass at that meeting, just authorizing application for the grant. I think we still use any letters of support from anyone to attach to that.
Okay.
Especially residents, if you know anybody out in three-notches that would write a letter just saying, hey, we've had the streets flooded and yards flooded.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, we have two Town Council members out there.
Oh, really?
That's right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
So what happens if you don't get those easements?
Uh, we relocate the pipe.
Yep, just move it over one.
Move it over one lot to where the easement is.
Yep.
And just fill and abandon that section. Moves the cost way up, so we have to put in new curb inlets. Let's put in new curb inlets at that point.
Mm-hmm.
So we have new structures, additional, well, new structures anyway, but additional structures, additional pipe length.
So there's easement there that could be used?
Yes.
Why wasn't that used originally?
They put the pipe in the wrong place.
Who knows? Who knows what they were smoking when they drew up those drawings?
That's right. They put the pipe in the wrong place, man.
The construction plans show it right where it's at. It's just not within an easement. That's why you have professional people reviewing your plans now and to make sure that doesn't happen. Yep. That's it all the way through there.
Alright, moving on to administrative items there.
Also, first we just have our department kind of review information from April. See, kind of the plans and subdivisions in our construction. Another thirteen new home permits in April.
How is that related to like last year?
A little bit slower, but not significantly. A lot of the, a lot of builders are running out of lots, frankly.
How is this?
There's a handful in Morningside. There's a handful, well, they just opened up a new section, Central up south. There's a handful of lots. I think there's six lots in Highland Knoll.
Yeah, filling up.
The lot supply, the ready-to-build lot supply is running slow, running low. The lot supply, the ready-to-build lot supply is running low. That's, I don't think it's lack of sales. It's, they just don't have the lots ready to build on.
All right, I know we haven't got much rain here lately.
No, we haven't.
I'm assuming the complaints are pretty slim, slim pickings on the complaints there.
Yeah, not, not, well, we did get a new one.
What?
We issued a violation and a fine at Aberdeen that 4053 Piscotty Court had a concrete truck wash out in the, in the storm drain.
No way, in the storm drain?
In the storm drain. So, yeah, I immediately wrote them a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. I had put a stop work order on the permit. So, they were quick to clean up the gutter and replace the filter basket in the storm.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, my goodness.
I think the question was, who needs to pay that fine? I said, "I don't care who pays the fine."
That tends to roll down hell, too. People.
The stop work order isn't getting listed until it's paid, so take it as you will.
Yeah. Happy Chinese. Hopefully, that wasn't Shelby Concrete, was it?
I don't know.
All right, just going to make sure.
Just going to guess, I am...
It's a possibility.
Who was the home builder?
Yeah.
Was it Brandon right here?
That was in Aberdeen?
Yeah, it was in Aberdeen.
Yeah, Aberdeen.
Yes, Brandon, Brandon Pointer.
What?
Brandon Pointer.
Who?
Brandon Pointer.
Brandon Pointer.
Is that the only, only building in there?
I think it's a Greg Allen house. I think it's a Greg Allen house.
Oh, you're saying that's where the concrete guy was?
That's who our contact person is, but I think it's a Greg Allen house.
It's a Greg Allen house?
Hmm.
I mean, the concrete guy should know you can't dump it in this...
They all know that.
They all know that.
I'll reserve my comments till after.
You know, I mean, that's, that's one of the worst violations you could have.
Yeah.
You know?
Like the stormwater.
Stormwater.
Alrighty, yeah.
I mean, that's just stupid.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else there, Joe? Is that it?
No, that's the only, actually, the only new entry on the stormwater complaint log. And the one before that was March thirty-first, so.
Yeah.
That one, Dover County issue, we forwarded over to.
Alright, treasurer's report. Are we still paying our bills?
They have the bills. I don't see anything exorbitant here, so unless you have any comments that can move to approve the monthly claims as presented.
All right, well, second that. So, we got a motion and a second to approve monthly claims as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Alrighty, our next meeting, June twenty-sixth.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second that. So, I got a motion and a second to adjourn. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.